Hello, everybody. Welcome to the planning board meeting of Thursday, September 24th. We have a couple of items on the agenda. Update on the downtown zoning project by the M A P C. Then we have a public hearing on 11812 to 16 Union Special Terminal and Site Plan Review, continued from September 10th meeting. And then we'll have a public hearing on 300 Elliott Street Site Plan Review. And then some other business discussion of the current status of the construction project at 128 Main Street. And then some planning board business. First, if you want to go ahead and introduce your for the M A P C, we'll let them update us on downtown zoning project.
Excellent. Thank you, Dale. Yeah, so Chris is here from M A P C to continue the discussion on the downtown zoning project. As you can recall, he was here a month ago, a little over a month, to discuss the results of the zoning survey. And now he's back to continue the discussion about possible modifications to the zoning bylaw. So, Chris, I've made you a co-host. You can share your screen if you would like, and you can take it away.
Okay, thank you. Okay, you can all see my screen? Okay, thanks, everybody, for having me back. So, as Emma said last time, I kind of gave an overview of the project, discussed the results of the survey, and gave some kind of high-level, kind of proposed areas for kind of moving forward. So tonight, the plan that Pete and I thought would kind of make maybe the most sense. Sorry, I'm trying to advance my slide. There we go. Was work and focus on one of the aspects, which is the, the design, I guess, what I'm calling the design elements as they relate to what is in the downtown zoning bylaw. And just to kind of give a preview of where we're going in terms of the process, the thought was to focus on that tonight. When I, in advance of the next time I come back, we would provide a first draft of the proposed modified zoning based upon your input tonight. And then after that, I would come back again. Obviously, there'll be sort of additional refinements. And then we'll kind of turn our work focus to the other two kind of big aspects that were, you know, potentials for discussion related to modifying the zoning, which was looking closer at the A sub-district and whether that would be better served as base zoning rather than an overlay. And second, whether it made sense to expand the downtown district in some, to some fashion. So that's just to kind of give an overview. The other thing that Pete and I were discussing was I'm going to go through these, these points. There's about a half a dozen of them. We thought what might make sense is for me to pause after each one to get some, your thoughts and feedback and reaction. So that's what I'll plan on doing. If you want me to go through the whole, the whole presentation at once, I'm happy to do that as well. And, you know, I'm happy to spend as much time on each of these as you would like. I just wanted to kind of let you know that there is about half a dozen of them, just so you can kind of keep that in the back of your mind in terms of maybe not getting too bogged down. So. So going, going in terms of what we are sort of thought made the most sense for, for modifications. First was related to the front setbacks. You know, this was, came through very strongly, the survey, that people really wanted a small minimum setback. It's, this kind of felt fairly cut and dry. And also, the top goal was having more seating and gathering space. And having this front yard setback for new development would also help to achieve that. You can see what there is today. You can have either a zero-foot setback, up to 15 for mixed-use buildings. So, you know, we were proposing that maybe what makes sense is to have between eight and 12 feet. The thought being that, you know, we sort of used 21 Main Street in some ways as a model because from both the survey and anecdotally, we got, I think, good feedback on that design of that building. And that has, I think it's about a 10-foot setback. So this then just provides, provided a little bit of, of flexibility for individual properties that would still be around that, that distance and not making any changes to dwelling units. So I'll pause there for a second and see the board's reaction to that, if that makes sense, or if they have other ideas.
Um, would, would we, would you consider doing like eight to 15 feet to give more of an option if somebody wanted to do a little bit bigger space?
Yeah, I, um.
It's three feet, I guess it's not really gonna, but.
So we, that's actually, you know, Pete and I discussed it this morning, and it, the original was 15 feet, then we thought 12 feet. The one thing I didn't, I did, didn't mention is that we also were proposing to allow deviation, so you could have a greater setback. But, you know, I'm, I think either one, whether it's 15 feet or 12 feet, I think either one makes sense. I think it's sort of up to the, you know, the board's feedback. I think either one can make, is appropriate.
So for instance, you're saying that if someone wanted to go 15 feet or more, they would just put that in their site plan and ask for it and justify the reason why they wanted more space out front and as a point that could be discussed.
Yeah, the onus would be on them to prove why that, that is, you know, beneficial to the town.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
So I'm going to keep moving, and obviously, if people decide that, a thought came to them after, we can always jump back as well. But thank you.
Actually, just one quick clarification. So that, that setback would be as measured from, say, the point of the sidewalk to the front of the structure, or is that curb to the front of the structure? Because I know, obviously, we're doing this, this re, you know, we're redoing the streets down and things are going to change. There's going to be, you know, I think some, some space created there. I guess, what's the measurement point for that?
Typically, Pete, feel free to jump in here. Typically, it's to, from the point of the right-of-way. So wouldn't be, so if you had a five-foot sidewalk, it would be in addition to a five-foot sidewalk. One of the nice things about that is that gives the area for people to actually walk, so it's not all taken up by seating.
Got it. Okay, so the, the eight to 12 feet as proposed would be from the right-of-way to the front of the structure. So it would be from the, presumably from the end of the sidewalk to the front of the structure, eight to 12 feet.
Correct. Again, Pete, just jump in if you have a different interpretation.
In other words, in other words, basically, by the, um.
Sorry, Mark, I think you're on mute.
Well, we're, we're talking as a planning board right now.
Well, you said at any time, and he said, he said anytime, anyplace to speak, and I'm saying, outside of the street, by this, by this side of the street to the sidewalk connection to the front section of the property is going to be the eight to 12, or whatever the lot size is, from the edge of grass to edge of sidewalk. Is that right?
Sorry, it was, it was breaking up a little bit. I, I think the idea is that it is, yeah, it's from your lot, the, your lot line is where the setback starts, regardless of whether there's a sidewalk or not.
And with the sidewalk, um, edge from the street to the sidewalk into the edge of the lot, have anything to do with it?
What he's saying, Mark, like, from the curb to the end of the sidewalk is in the right-of-way, right, the public land, right, it's its own. And so he's saying that the setback begins from the end of that right-of-way, or at the end of the sidewalk to the front of the structure.
Yeah, so basically, grass to sidewalk.
Okay.
Just to jump in here.
As we. Who's, who was that?
That was, this is me, Peter.
I, I think what we need to do is let him give his whole.
Presentation.
Presentation, and then, because it's gonna, it's gonna get all broken up and go in every, every which direction. So I think we'll let him finish his presentation, and then we'll come back and talk to the planning board, and then we'll have the comments.
Okay.
Okay.
Don't forget public, public will be here.
Okay.
Yes, Mark.
So the, the second piece then is talking about the glazing requirements. So essentially, how much, first of all, should there be a requirement for ground floor windows? And then how much should that be? We asked that question as part of the survey. Again, as with the front setbacks respondents, we're overwhelmingly in favor of this. I mean, frankly, for, especially for commercial properties, that's essentially, at these days, it's sort of common sense. I think they're generally going to do that, but this sort of codifies it and codifies the expectations. In the existing zoning, there's sort of encouraged window styles, but nothing about sort of how much you should actually have for it. So, you know, again, what we're starting in terms of our proposal was that for the ground floor for commercial uses, measured between two and 12 feet of the, of your, that front-facing facade needs to have 60% of that be consisting of windows for residential, residential uses. That number would go down to 30%. These numbers, where I sort of got them from, I mean, these are based upon precedents from other zoning bylaws. I've seen it as high as, I think, a 75%. I've also seen it as requiring the whole facade as opposed to measuring kind of in that middle space. So this is, I think, a little bit more, provides a little more flexibility and what I would think sort of reasonableness to, to how much windows should be required. But again, at the end of this, we'll come back to this and get your feedback from, from the board. The third aspect is what I'm calling vertical modulation. You know, the idea here is to help sort of visually break down the, the look of bulk for larger buildings and sort of essentially break it up. The, again, a strong majority of the respondents felt that this was important. Like, just to point to one example, again, going back to the 21 Main Street example, you know, that, that is a feature that, that is, you know, it's sort of broken up where there is half of, a part of the building has a slight change in the plane, there's a change in the color of the materials, et cetera. That's not required today, so we would, this would be something new that we would recommend adding in. You know, again, we can structure it different ways. This is, again, a sort of, one recommendation would be that if you have a building with the face of it along the right-of-way is greater than 60 feet, then that's where sort of it's triggered that you need to have some sort of this sort of vertical articulation. And there's different, there'd be essentially a menu of options to, to show that you are sort of meeting those requirements. And then the planning board would, would make a judgment that those requirements are being met. So I'll keep moving. Uh, the next one now is called, what I'm calling building components. So those are things like dormers, shed dormers, bay windows, et cetera. Things, again, that help, can help break up the, I guess, monotony of a, of a potentially blank facade. Again, you had a strong majority, two-thirds, felt that this was important. You know, you can see that, again, on 21 Main Street, that this has those big dormers that, again, I think, add this, sort of reduce the bulk of the building, add some visual interest. And also, for the developer, it helps increase their gross floor area, so it's generally in their, in their interest as well. Today, there's nothing required. The, some of the diagrams that accompany the A D D C does have, does show that, but there's nothing sort of, that's, that's actually explicitly required. So. Sorry. So the proposal would be that we would, again, provide essentially a menu of options that, that need to be included. You know, I've seen it done where it's just lists the options. I've also seen it done where each of those options has their own standards in terms of, it could be this. For example, if you have a dormer, are there minimum setbacks from, from the roof line, things like that? Again, that, you know, how much detail, it sort of depends how much the, the board would like for this. I think it's a little bit less important, to be honest, in the case of Ashland, because you also have your design review guidelines. And so I think, in my mind, the design review guidelines sort of cover those types of details. But again, it's, you know, that'll be, that's the feedback that we're looking to get from you tonight. I think there are two more. So here I have copies from your bylaw, where they have essentially for each sub-district. Here I've put Sub-District B and C just for examples. I know you obviously can't read the text there, but it's just to show the format. And the top of it has these diagrams that have encouraged facade typologies, they're, they're called. I think, you know, I recommend that, based upon the survey and what we've heard, revisiting these diagrams. You know, for a couple of reasons. For one thing, again, going back to 21 Main Street, a very popular building, I'm going by that assumption. There's no diagram here that actually reflects that, even though that is in the Sub-District C. So if that is a building that, that, you know, the town wants to encourage more of, I think at the very least, if you're going to have these diagrams, you should have one that matches the type of building. I also see some issues with Sub-Area B. Those buildings, those row kind of buildings with the flat roofs, I certainly think that they're attractive and they fit in a lot of contexts, but I'm not so sure that those fit in Ashland, that you would necessarily want that. What feels to me like a more of an urban feel than you might typically see in, in the town. There's also that building on the far left that looks like some sort of institutional type use. I don't really think a general developer is going to be building something that looks too much like that. And then I guess the final point would be that, you know, 128 Main Street, that very much tracks what is the third from the left. And so, you know, I think that's just something to think about. Do we really like that building? And we have it, have it there, but if not, then if you want to encourage different styles, then that's what should match in this diagram. So, um. My proposal then here is, I think, either removing these buildings altogether. I think the table part is, is good, which gives some encouraged sort of streetscape things to include, what types of window design to include. But I think, you know, the town might be better served by just having diagrams that illustrate the other concepts, like the glazing and setbacks and things like that. Or if you, you know, feel like you're sort of wedded to having diagrams, then, then I would suggest, you know, we go back and just really see what makes sense for the town and what you really like. And then one more point, the final point has to do with the design review guidelines. So obviously, these are a separate document, not part of the zoning bylaw itself. One of the things that came through mostly from the Urban Land Institute Technical Assistance Panel that was done a couple of years ago, and they did some interviews. And apparently, some of the landowners felt that the relationship between the zoning bylaw and the design review guidelines was either confusing or even conflicting at times. And I, I reviewed them, and I, I think that there, that might be the case in some instances. What I would propose is have the design review guidelines really focus on the, sort of the details of the design. The bylaw is going to cover like the big picture things, like where is, what is the setback, for example? How is a building maybe oriented? But then the design review guidelines would focus which, that, that little picture that's there is what is in your design review guidelines today. So that gets really kind of down into the weeds of the design, which I think might be more appropriate there. So I'll stop there, and then we can go back to any of these to discuss.
Um, I think, you know, I think in general that these, um, that all of these points are ones that we've been talking about consistently in the planning board for all the recent projects that have come up. We also have pulled 21 Main Street in quite a few times. So it's actually, I, from, from what I have heard, wasn't an overwhelmingly popular building when it was proposed, but it has grown beloved, thankfully. And so I think that makes a lot of sense. I think some of these things are just, you know, it's a matter of 12 feet or 15 feet, both of which are probably fine. And, you know, it's kind of a line in the sand. The glazing as well, as kind of a, just a good general starting point to give, give developers the idea of what we're looking for, with always some option for going more than 60%. Obviously, they can always do more than that. I think the thing that remains confusing a little bit is how to represent the building components in there, because I think what we found, and I'm not sure if this is maybe something that needs to be worded in text, is that when you put an image in there, and I don't think it matters if it's an image like 21 Main Street or these little diagrams that are in there already, it becomes, well, that's what they want. They want it to look like that, when really, it is just a diagram, an example. We don't want everyone, every building to look like 21 Main Street. That would be terrible, right? If you just copycatted that down the street. So it's that mix, but understanding that those are in fact examples and diagrams. And I think professional firms understand that and know that, and they take off from there. And firms or, or developers that are less experienced don't know that, and they take it as kind of word of law that this is the recipe for success, I guess. And I'm not sure how to, you know, I'm not sure how that gets regulated or explained in this kind of document.
Yeah, that's a good thought. One thing I meant, I forgot to mention, but you, you had raised this point or this question at the last meeting was whether we, whether, A, we can, and B, whether it makes sense to actually require a registered architect to, to be involved in any of these developments. And that is not uncommon to do, so it's just part of the site plan review process. We couldn't put that in, that, you know, the plans need to be submitted and, you know, stamped by a registered architect. So, you know, that's one, that's a little bit of an aside, but I just wanted to know that we were, I was addressing that other concern you had. So, you know, one thought then is, you know, maybe this diagram that has these, you know, quote-unquote, encouraged typologies, which show a lot of different ones, maybe we should be keeping them. You know, and maybe we just need to clarify that the, this is not an exhaustive list or, you know, exhaustive view of what's possible for good design. And if that is the case, I still think then that we do need to look through these and decide, are some of these just not something we really do want here? On the other hand, again, people might look at this and go too far and just draw exactly this, and they don't get the details right, so.
Right, it's almost like these are, I mean, these are almost exactly historical examples of things that are sitting along the street, like literally. And even that far-left building, that's, that's like community center or the library, you know? Like, these are the things that are here, and, and those are, and those two buildings are both object buildings. And so they're not really meant to be part of the streetscape in that way. So maybe it's not like a really good example to have as a part of the street, because it's not really what they're intending to do. But the other ones, I think it's a, it's a, um, that, you know, you can kind of do it in two ways. You can kind of say, hey, these are historical examples of what we have along the street and what we want new designs to relate to. Or, and/or you show something like 21 Main Street that does just that. It kind of uses these examples, but doesn't replicate them. But on the other hand, by, by putting in 21 Main Street, you don't want them to all copy 21 Main Street. Because I don't think that's the one and only answer either. You know, it's, it's just one answer.
I mean, I guess my, my bias would be that, that type of thing where you, you know, show examples of what's there today, and you want future development to respect what's done in the past, but not imitate it, is better in the design guidelines document rather than the bylaw, because it's hard to regulate. You know, bylaw is supposed to be, in my mind, more cut and dry standards, like you have to do this.
So that would maybe go toward not having any diagrams, having just, these are the regulations, and they have to go deeper into the design review guidelines to figure some components of that out.
That, I, I think, um, I think diagrams can be useful when they're illustrating a specific point, but not the actual building design. So if we wanted just a diagram, that's very simple to show, you know, where parking is supposed to be located and what's supposed to happen in the front setback, I think that works fairly successfully and easily. I, I think I struggle a little bit more with these diagrams on this slide that are meant to actually provide that sort of, I guess, inspiration for the actual design of the building.
If, if, say, things like building components were, if you were just showing kind of just the roof, you know, just the top layer, like, here are some dormer examples, here are some, I don't know what we showed besides dormers, but as far as building, these are examples of building components, but without showing the whole building. So they're kind of just getting an idea of, here's some parts, without giving them kind of like the answer to the exam, I guess, about how to, how they're used. Is that what you mean?
That's what I mean. And so what I can do is, I can put that together for the draft, and then obviously, that gives you something to actually look at and decide whether you feel like that, that is useful. If, if we want to always just go straight text, we can also do that as well, but it's easier to take it away than add it in after, I think.
I think it's worth seeing what a different version of diagrams would be like. It's more like a definition. What is a building component? Here's some examples of building components, not examples of buildings, just examples of building components.
Correct, exactly, yes.
Okay.
And this is Lakshmi here. So this brings an interesting question along the lines of what Trish was saying. So you mentioned that you had looked up the design review guidelines. So was this the points that were brought up during the design review guideline study? That, that's what deviated from the zoning laws?
Um, so I'm going by, like I said, this, this study wasn't focused on the design review guidelines.
Oh, okay.
U L I did a kind of an overarching look at your entire downtown. Zoning was just one small component. And I think a few sentences that I relate to you.
Oh, okay, okay.
Lakshmi, the U L I report looked at everything from, you know, circulation, parking, transportation, but then also it took into account zoning. So that's just one piece, I would say.
Oh, okay, okay, thanks.
No problem. All right.
Anyone else on the board? I, I agree with Trish that maybe should be, show some of the components and let them figure out their whole building on their own, rather than show them a picture of a building and they try to build that.
Okay.
Um, anybody else on the board?
I, I'm in alignment. I'm in alignment with what's been said by previously.
Okay. And, okay, then, oh, anybody from the public want to comment on this?
Yes, thank you. Mark, thank you, Mark Sony. And, um, no, we'll go back, no, please go back to what was this, what you had up there you're talking about, please. Yes. I can understand, since I'm the one that got a pass in this town, the form-based code F B C. I can understand the tables being correct, being, being what they should be, and having the buildings themselves be more updated than what they look like there in the pictures. All flat, square roofs, yeah, this doesn't fit there. But what, what I was trying to put in, and I, I was successful with the tables, was the, um, the buildings and what they're going to be used for, mixed-use residential business, and other, other sizes buildings, and what they can be used for retail and other uses in downtown actualities. Historically, yes, history does move on. And I'm thanking Mr. Coucheau for his explanation, going through the zone and this little part of it, something like that. But this, this right here is what I, I got passed in the town even turn general. But overall, it looks like you want to keep that table, the, the text table at the bottom, but you'd like to have more modern buildings to show. Isn't that right?
Well, I, go ahead, he can answer that if he's talking. But I think what we're talking about is not showing actual buildings, because some people that, like Trish said, that don't have a vision as much, might look and say, let's build building number two. And they'll just kind of try to make it look like that. When, we don't really want that, we just want those elements into the building.
Okay, now, I'm going, okay, thank you. And Mr. Coucheau, you should be saying those buildings with the, with the flat roofs. You would go with what you see now instead of what's on. You will go with with what you see now instead of what's on in black and gray here. And saying what the building should look like on the streets and then the text tables, the tables underneath. Should go with what there is with zoning and historical. For working together with, right?
Yeah, what I I think the, what I'm, I think I'm saying, trying to say is that the the tables, I think, work really well that you have there. I think in the bylaw themselves, they're actually way too small. You can't see them very easily, but that's easy just to to make them larger. I think my concern was that these these diagram buildings and I I think this is, you know. Kudos to the town, first of all, for getting this kind of early form-based code done, probably one of the earliest in the states. And sorry, in the state of Massachusetts. So, you know, I think as I said at the beginning of last meeting, this is. We're already starting from a great bylaw in many ways. I I I'm concerned of keeping these buildings in this diagram in. Because of the reasons that, one, it might give an idea of types of buildings you don't necessarily want. Such as, you know, a developer is not going to build that municipal building that you see on the on the far left that looks like the library. So it's not as appropriate. I was given the option that one option would be we replace these with diagrams. Just that we we with diagrams of buildings that we actually want. Or we don't have any buildings and we instead focus on kind of the the design. Principles or elements that we care about, whether it's building components or setbacks and just have diagrams to reflect that aspect. The feedback that I've been getting from the board has sounded like the latter approach might be what you're more, what you're more comfortable with. I could go either way. I I think that approach might be a little bit better.
Okay, so. I'll mute myself after this. You're working with our planners. But these bylaws that I got passed, the form-based bylaw here. Was before they, before they got high here in the town, but one or two planners before them. So if you work, you're going to work through our plan, Peter, Peter and Emma and get together, talk together. And work this out together. I would like to be involved in this because I'm the one that got this passed. I want to get some input. To say, to help out. Because Peter, Peter and I were both heard me say this before to them. I brought in all the paperwork and did the work, did the text with them and all that stuff. But I want to work together with this as a as a group. Because I have home time, I got home time to do. But I also, I okay, I'm almost done, but I'm also saying. That it was that I I'm blowing my own horn this one time because I felt good passing this. But I did understand it and I want to work together. Thank you, Doug.
Hey, Pete?
Yeah, no, Mark, I I'm more than happy to reach, you know, to set up a meeting and you and I can sit down and discuss this and. And and Chris and I and Emma have been working on this together and and you and I can go through and and I know you were a very. Essential piece to the puzzle when the town of Ashland did adopt this zoning. So so. We can sit down and make an appointment and 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 sit down and talk through this. So. But we have a big agenda tonight. So, you know, if I know we can, you know, if if. You know, if if I think, you know, as long as Chris and I feel comfortable, which which I do at this point, you know. To give us some directions to move forward and then we can kind of bring this back up front of the board at at a later date, I would say.
And and just to clarify it, like process, Peter, because I I think that this would help people listening to this kind of understand and please. Just jump in if I go astray. The concept here is that Chris is going to take this, is going to create a proposed. New set of 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 zoning recommendations, right? And ultimately, at some future meeting, Chris is going to come back and say, okay. Here's this, here's the, here's the proposed new guidance that would be, that we would propose putting into the zoning. Bylaws of the town of Ashland and it would even have a compare. This is what it was before and this is what it is now. And then that's presented to the board, the planning board for consideration, and the planning board then decides whether or not it. Puts that guidance forward to the townspeople of Ashland for a vote at a future town meeting, correct?
That is correct. And just as a little background knowledge for everybody, before I arrived here, the the previous planner received a. Twenty five thousand dollar grant from the state and that's what we're we're actually using. To hire MAPC to review our zoning bylaws in the downtown, which are about five, six years old at this point, since they were last modified. MAPC came through and 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 was able to grant the town a ten thousand dollar planning assistance grant. And so we are doing this as an update to the zoning bylaws. But Joe, that is correct. We're working with Chris as a town. Through our regional planning agency to review the zoning and then at some, at at the final product will be. Proposed zoning guidelines or, you know, professionally proposed and developed bylaws which could be implemented, which which therefore. Update our current zoning bylaws.
Yeah, upon the vote of the townspeople of Ashland at a town meeting to adopt those bylaws.
It would be very, this is a zoning bylaw. This has to go to town meeting. But it's a long process and and we started off the public, you know, reaching out to the public through our survey. And and now we're here talking about it at a public meeting. And so it's a step-by-step process and it happens slowly. The wheels of government turn fairly slowly.
My, the point of my comments, Peter, is purely to establish process, right? So that people can understand that. You know, there will be a formal presentation. There it will be be very specific in terms of what's being proposed. The planning board will have the ability to comment and modify it based upon public comment. And ultimately, it will then go to the townspeople, the town of Ashland to vote up or down into our bylaws. So I'm just, I'm just establishing that this is. Kind of one of two or three more steps before this, this would become something that is part of our our bylaws.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so then you have some enough to work with, right, Mr. Kershaw?
Yeah, thank you, everyone, for the.
You kind of have an idea of what you we need for the next step is to to narrow it down even further, right?
Yep, next step, I'll have something for you to shoot at.
Okay. All right, then. Any more other comments?
Actually, I had a concern. My name is Emily. I live right behind the property of a home right behind the property on Pond Street. I've had with the Bank of America, actually that commercial prop, that commercial property, it actually says here. Something about additional lighting. So we can talk about that a little bit, proposing additional lighting that is to be. Operational during all hours. What's what's happening with that and and then also with, I don't. Well, that basically, because our home is right next to it, so it affects us directly.
Right next to.
Thank you, Emily, as a concerned citizen. However, this is the the Bank of America, three hundred Elliott Street is a public hearing that has not. We have not entered into on the agenda. So we're just getting through our first agenda item, which is the downtown zoning discussion. Our second agenda item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. And then then we'll go into the Pond Street, three hundred, three hundred Bank of America. So.
You'll have to redo that whole speech.
I'll do it later.
But you can hold on to that one, so. We're going to jump into the public safety building next, so.
Okay, so we need to continue this?
No, it's a, it's a, you know.
It's just a.
It's a date. It's an update and it will appear on the agenda again. Hopefully, probably not next meeting, but maybe the meeting after, I would say.
Okay. So then the next item would be the municipal building, right?
That's correct.
Go go ahead, Pete. You probably got more paperwork on it than I do.
Thank you, Chris. So tonight we're reopening the public hearing for the public safety building. And so at our last meeting, the public safety team. KM, KTM Architects, I'm sorry if I got that wrong. Submitted indoor presented a fairly extensive. Proposed site plan. Since then, they have gone to the design review committee. Which I can, which the planning board did receive their comments through Emma Snelling. I would let Emma brief the board if if the board would like on that meeting. And I know the architectural team is here to present their plan and and some of the changes that they made. I know tonight the architectural team will be presenting a lighting plan and also modifications, indoor changes. To the landscape, the landscape plan. So at this point, Dale, through you, I would hand it over. To Janet and her team and they can run through the changes that have been made.
I'm going to share my screen with you and let me know if you can see it.
Real quick, Pete, I thank you because evidently I'm parked right next to a train track. There's a train going by every five seconds. So I had to mute because it's pretty loud.
And Dale, I do want to apologize to the.
Thanks for, if I'm muted for a second, I'm, I'll I'll give you the thumbs up or whatever. That means there's a train right there in front of me going across. Like every three, five minutes. Sorry.
I I do want to apologize. I did get the initials wrong. The architectural team is HKT. So. My regrets. So and on this note, I'll I'll hand it over to you.
Okay, I I just want to start over. I did note you wanted me to stop or something, so I will share my screen again. Okay, we we have, as as Peter just said, this is our second planning board meeting. We completed the technical technical review as well with the with the town, prevented the design review committee. Who's voted that they satisfied the requirements of the design review and Emma can, when she shares it, she'll go through that. We have submitted and will be presenting to the CONCOM shortly. And we'll be having a meeting with the public safety building committee shortly to present the multiple color selection options for the detailed building materials. Our entire team is obviously working hard to complete the bid documents, time for all time meeting. And with me tonight are members of the of my team that you've seen or met before. Including Par Corporation, we have. Civil and. Traffic engineers with us tonight and our landscape architects again with us tonight, as well as Paul Claridge from HKT, who is our project manager for the project. So this presentation is quite short and it's really just more about the changes rather than anything else. So. And I got nothing going here. Okay, there I go. So my, I just, we had a much longer cycle straight process here, but and you can. Ask us any questions about this later, but you know, the site is part of a much bigger site. There was a new property line. It has zoning requirements in the. Twenty five in the front and fifty on the body residential. There's still a lot of topography at thirty five foot grade change and it rises to the east. Just to the right side of the site. We have wetlands and we're looking to replicate off-site some of the wetlands so that we can build where we need to. We've had extensive geotechnical investigation because of the bedrock and there's those dots represent various bedrock elevations. So that was used to help us determine exactly where the building should be and how we should organize it. And then we did an extensive traffic analysis because of the the public roads right outside the door and the intersecting roads. So we can, we can ask questions about that later, but I just wanted to briefly go through that again, just to remind everybody where we are sitting. And what the challenges of the site are. This is the proposed plan once again. And I'm going to get a little pointer out here to make sure that. That I can point to things. So there's one entry for the public and staff, which is right here. And that leads to parking for the public and it leads to the Sallyport, which is back in here. And all the way up on top of the site, there's a shooting range right here. So it does that. There is a significant setback from the street. We have a very large apron for the apparatus trucks to move out, so that's sitting back. Quite far from the street itself. There's public parking, as I pointed out before, in the front and on the sides. Most of the staff and cruiser administration vehicles will park in the back of the site, in the rear of the site. There's the apparatus is going to exit from the northeastern portion of the site. This is not a drive-through building. This is a, all the vehicles will be exiting. Here and there will, there could possibly be an alteration to the back parking area depending on the final access easement agreement in the rear parcel. So right now, we we've shown a possible layout here that could could be revised. I'm going to let Nancy from RDLA Landscape Architects just give you a highlight of what she has. The adjustments she's made for some of the questions that were brought up on last time. So this is a revised landscape plan. So Nancy, if you want to join us.
Thanks, Janet. Yeah, I I think many of you have probably seen the landscape plan in the past, but in the. Since you last saw this, we've added some site furnishings. Some in the front at the north of the building, we've added some benches. For the public right there and a bench here at the front entrance, some bike racks along the the. Curving walk along Union Street. And then Janet, maybe, yeah, right there.
Right there.
Yes, yes, there they are. And then near the the police entrance, we have a picnic table. For use by people working in the department. And then we've added some picnic tables at the fire department entrance. As well as a bench. And I think that's primarily the changes since you've seen this the last time. Yeah. Oh, I know, Janet. One more thing is the memorials. Two existing memorials from, I believe it's the fire department to near the flagpole. And that is at the front of the building. And I believe that's about it. Right.
Thanks, Janet. Okay. And the site lighting, these were part of your package last time. We didn't include it in the presentation, but it was in there and I just. Wanted to bring it out to you again. I I tried to highlight. In green, it's hard to see, but they are green, all the all the pool that are in the thirteen foot and a half foot high pools, they will mark. All the major lighting areas and then these blue dots here represent a a baller type lighting, which will be on pathways. For parking and then there's a building illuminated wall lighting and that you can see those represented here. And it's more decorative in nature. So there are some more extensive light packs in the back of the building. That, you know, sort of will be used, sort of things like this, what we usually, you know, we usually use them in our police departments. You know, for a use. For incidents or, you know, something happens outside or whatever. So there's more extensive light on it, but those are, you know. Not not, a lot of them are used and they're around there. So that's that's it. So it's pretty, everything is. LED and dark sky compliant and and everything will be, the illumination is limited to the property boundaries. So nothing, there's going to be those lights bill, the pretty low fixtures relatively for the site and. Appropriately off so that there's not huge overlaps in the lighting. So that's the lighting plan. You know, I just brought the plans and again, just to remind everybody what we're doing here. This is anything in red is the fire department, anything blue is the police department, anything in the tanning color is either shared. Or public interaction spaces, I will point out mostly, you know, that the. Area right in. Is a lot of, Vestfield has a community room. It has the dispatch center, it has public records here and there's a safe haven right here. So that if people are feeling upon entering the building that they need to be in a secure area, we can get them in there right away and then move them into a more secure zone quickly. The Vestfield also acts as a as a safe haven. Mostly for after our use so that someone can come into that lobby, hit a button, everything will lock down and they would be secure. The the spec, this rear area here is all related to detention and the Sallyport areas, so it's a very secure area for the police department. So that's that's the first floor of the main floor. This is the upper level. So up in the upper level, again, this is all the fire department living quarters. This is spaces related to the the police department, support areas, including their locker rooms. And then this is a shared fitness room and all the rest of these. And then this is a shared fitness room and all the rest of these color boxes are essentially mechanical spaces. There's a small training area up here off the upper level, mezzanine of the fire department and then more mechanical rooms. So because of the hillside we talked about, there is a rare exit off of this building. Those is where the picnic tables that Nancy was talking about, those will, those will be located. So, you know, because of the graves, that is what can happen there. This box right here is a sort of a carport, three-sided carport for additional vehicles for the departments. And this is the third floor plan. And the third floor plan is police administration and fire administration. You'll come up the centralized elevator. You'll be in a lockdown area here for the public. And then either the police department will allow you to come enter beyond that or the fire department, dependent on the needs. Their administrators are located opposite those spaces. So people can be seen. And when you, you know, these are the fire exits through the building. The roof plan is solar ready. All these yellow boxes represent the solar ready portions of the building. We have two green roofs, one off of this administration space and one over the Sallyport. You can see that there's, these boxes here represent a sort of a roof monitor. So because the building sits into the hillside, we provided some lighting to get into the deep portions of the apparatus space. The elevations are, you've seen all of these before. This is the north elevation, which is the main one on the road. You can see the materials are masonry. Everything that's a sort of a light color, it represents a masonry product. They're standing seam metal siding on the upper levels and on pitch roofs. There's fiber cement siding on the gable end walls, which is represented by this, this color here. There's varying heights of the building depending on the use of the building. There's some bay, there are bay windows here, popouts and some roof lines here that add interest. And there is a clear story. Again, this is the clear story that I was talking about over the apparatus banks. There is a clock, town clock. There's the wall mounted lighting that I spoke about. You can see it in between the columns here and alongside the building on these locations. And there's some accent framing or penetration accent framing and there's locations on the windows. The east elevation, the, this one really shows that grade change in a more specific fashion. You can see the front. This represents the front of the apparatus bay and this is that rear portion. So we're up almost a story there. So there's a significant change in grade. There's a variety of roof planes here. You can see the, clearly see the monitors in this location which are all solar ready. And when we've tried to, you know, put some solar, masonry veals into the building to add some interest and help define that edge of the building a little better. South elevation again shows the significant changes in grade from the main elevation all the way up to the rear. The road behind the building wraps around to get you up to this top level. This is the entry and where the picnic tables will be for the fire department. And this is the entry outside the police department where there'll also be the picnic tables. So the, this is, you know, this is a very sort of a private space for the fire police departments. It's an operational space in the rear. You, you won't see the public going up there to park. This parking will be all, pretty much all department issue. So. And then this is the west elevation. And you can, what you notice here is the, this is the wing of a Sallyport, which is, has doors with no windows, no windows in a detention area. This is the upper level of the fire department. And, and this is the main building piece here. Three-story building that fronts on the main road. And then I just, these are some earlier 3D, but they're in a pretty accurate still. Views of the building. This is the big apparatus bay. These are the, the glazing windows. Tried again to bring as much natural daylight into the space, into the building in the front and in the, in the middle and in the rear with the use of the monitors. And this is a view looking from Union Street headed eastbound. You'll basically come in the building, you'll park here and go with this main entry. These are, again, we don't try to put the trees in front of the building. You can see the ghosts of the trees here. This will be that, the walkways, the monuments will be in here, the flagpole, the benches that Nancy reviewed. Those will all be in this general area right here. And, and that's the main entry under the canopy. And that's it. I leave you on the proposed landscape plan because it's the best way to see the entire project. So I'm open for questions.
Okay, first, before we do that, I would like to ask one question because you, you mentioned that you want to have this ready for town meeting. And I just want to between you and Pete, see if, if what we have to do, if all that can happen. I mean, what you have to do and we have to do can happen and we make sure we like work towards that.
Yes.
Because the, you know, some, some of those things in there, we don't really, we have input on, but I would just like to know between you and Pete, how, what exactly needs to be done between now and, and having it ready for town meeting?
Yeah. So just from my point of view Dale, is, is the planning board, all we have to do, you know, is vote on the, the site plan and the special permits that are in front of us tonight. And that's all we have to do from the planning board's perspective. And then the, the town as a whole, they have to continue working with HKT to move forward and put the construction documents together with the bid package as well. So that's a separate item. The item that's in front of the planning board tonight is strictly for the site plan, which is saying, which would be approving, you know, the circulation of site, the, the location of the building, the parking, the lighting, and then the two special permits regarding grading on the site. That's what is in front of the planning board tonight.
Because I would like to, if we can focus on those things, especially, I mean, whatever other comments they have for while everybody's here, but make sure that we, we get over those so that we can move forward. Okay, any, anybody on the planning board have any questions for?
Just a general question for Peter. So is this, the, the special, the site plan review is maybe pretty obvious, but the special permit is a typical special permit where we're looking at the qualifications of a special permit, of it meeting the qualifications of a-
Yeah, it would be those six qualifications of a special permit. And in this case, Trish, it really revolves around grading and grading of the site. And, and to get in specifics, really, the site is, the site is obviously not level, as you can see from the topography. So there has to be a cut and a fill. And it's greater than the, I believe, thousand cubic yards of land that has to be kind of moved around.
Right, but, but what you're saying about the, about the grading, so the grading is one issue on the special permit, is that the issue? Or do the other issues, community needs, traffic flow and safety?
That is the, yeah, that's the issue.
What's, what's that?
Oh, yes. Those six points, those six reference points for the special permit, the criteria are always going to be the criteria.
Okay.
Correct. However, the, the, the special permits that are advertised for this project are really revolve around the site and the site grading alone. There's no special permit for use. It's regarding the special permits for grading alone.
So that's the only thing we'd be discussing about special permit is if the grading is okay? Is that, okay, the only thing we'd be voting on is about grading and the special permit?
Correct.
Okay.
There's no use. That's, this isn't allowed use.
Okay. But things like neighborhood character and things like that, is that not a part of the special permit?
It's part of that criteria in this case, Trish, but you can, we kind of have to read into, is the neighborhood character going to be affected by the, you know?
Yeah, no, I understand. I'm just wondering what we're, you know, what is included in the special permit? If all I'm talking about is grading, then all I'll talk about is grading. If I'm looking at the criteria, then I want to know that I'm looking at the criteria. So.
The special permits cover the grading.
So how the grading affects the neighborhood, I guess?
Correct. How does the grading affect the neighborhood? How does the grading affect parcels?
Okay, okay.
I do have the grading plan, so I, I wanted to bring that up. I didn't include it, but I have it sitting if you have questions. And Lindsay and Lance and are here, but Lindsay can take anything you want to ask about grading.
Okay. So it's just how do the, how does the grading affect the characteristics? That's what, that's what you're saying?
Correct. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, okay.
I'm just trying to flip. I have my bylaws in front of me. I'm trying to get that.
So the questions then raised by the design review committee, which then comes back to us, are they, are some of those comments outside the jurisdiction of what's being presented to us, what we're voting on in the planning board? Do you understand my question?
A little bit, but can you go into a little bit more detail?
Well, for instance, you know, they were talking about, and I'm not saying I agree or disagree with this, but how well the, the committee also expressed concern that the proposed building does not fit the aesthetics of current buildings in Ashland. Is that part of the special permit? Or is that really outside of?
Outside of.
Of any of our discussion or jurisdiction?
I would say that's kind of outside. You know, I think that's their opinion. You know, unless we want to get into the aesthetics of the building. However, it's kind of outside in my eyes of what we're going to, what we can discuss here and what the special permits and the site plan are, are meant for.
Yeah, I was just confused about some of the comments on there. And so I didn't, I wanted to make sure we're discussing the right things, I guess. So for instance, on the, on the review, one thing they had mentioned was they recommended a crosswalk connection from Union Street to Waverly. And so that might be appropriate in this because it's about connection to the community. And I, I didn't know, it, it seemed like the, the site plan dealt with pedestrian movement fairly explicitly, but I was wondering if someone could comment on that, if something about maintaining a continuous sidewalk, I think from Union Street to Waverly.
So Trisha, I can, I can speak to it a little bit and then maybe Janet can elaborate because I know they did look at it a bit. And so I think the comment from design review was a little outside of sort of this project. So it was really continuing the connection over to Waverly. We certainly recognized the comments. Janet can speak to it. We did have the traffic, our traffic engineer look at it a bit to see if there is anything that we could tweak. And I, and I don't believe that there is a, a sort of solution that would be, that would make it a safer sort of connection point. That, that I think, you know, the point is well taken and what I had talked about at design review is also making sure that we take that comment and bring it back to our DPW. So as they work on sort of longer term, because obviously it's on the other side of the road, it's on a, you know, town road, that we could certainly take that into consideration as we build out sidewalk plans. Because I do think, you know, I think that there was, it was a point well taken in terms of, but slightly outside of the scope of what, what we were looking at here. Because it's again, across the street.
Okay, okay.
While we were talking about that, I just had a quick, something I, I wanted to mention. For the, the traffic lights are the ones on either side of the bridge going to be tied into this too? Because that could be a, you know, you, you drive over the train from this way, but if there's a bunch of traffic backed up at that intersection at the bridge at a red light, is that going to all be controlled the same way?
I can speak to that quickly. We've been working with Mike Duka, who's been overseeing the signals within the town. He had previously reached out as far as trying to get some better coordination with the signal that is proposed that exists here that we're modifying with the one directly to the southwest at Fountain Street. There is a proposal to add a radio communication. So when the preemption is triggered here and the emergency vehicles exit, it will relay that trigger to the adjacent signal at Fountain Street and trigger the preemption there as well. So the two will happen at the same time. There is preemption at the adjacent signal today using what they call opticom receivers that detect the truck coming down the street, but due to the sharp curvature of the road, they are not capturing that signal from the approaching trucks quick enough to really flush it out. So this immediate sync of the signal between the two, between the two here and at Fountain Street should allow that to flush appropriately for the approaching emergency vehicles.
Yeah. So the one at, at the bridge would kind of go green and let everybody get out of there?
Exactly, exactly.
I just, I thought of that and I wanted to mention it while I was thinking of it, but. So back to the, what we're approving is the grading and how that ties into the special permit, right?
Well, and site plan in general.
And site plan in general Dale.
Yeah, okay.
So there's, there's one issue, there's, there's one issue that I just want to talk about briefly and, and I think we have, I think there's, there's, there's an answer to it pretty well. And I just want to get, kind of put that on record as part of this conversation about, about this. So you, you know, there was reference made in the, in the previous meeting to a, some potential future easement by the, the party that's donating the land to the town of Ashland for this building. And so I, I separately, you know, inquired of Peter after the last meeting and said, you know, is this something that we need to be concerned about or that needs to be considered as part of our decision around this, this site plan and this special permit? And so Peter, Peter took the opportunity to kind of, you know, run that by town council to just kind of get a, kind of her opinion on whether or not that's something that we needed to, to kind of deal with as part of our decision. And so Peter, how, how do you want to kind of just get her kind of view on that laid into this, just kind of put on public record?
Well, I can pull up the email and Joe, and I'll read it in the public record. I just have to.
And Peter, why you, Peter, why you pull that up? Do you mind if I just give a sort of overview so that people sort of understand, I think, what Joe is referring to? So as part of the gift agreement, the landowner maintained, that he wanted to maintain access as, through an easement that we're continuing to work with him or them on in order to, to obtain the deed. And so we have a gift agreement that was accepted by town meeting and we've been working under that, guys. And we're continuing to work with him as we move forward. I think Dale talked a little bit about sort of what are all the things we have to do before we go out to bid so that we can bring some solid numbers to town meeting. You know, we'll continue to work with that landowner to obtain the deed so that when we come to town meeting, we'll have a nice, you know, we'll, we'll have a full picture and package of where this project is and what we're really hoping for is that we'll have worked through the process and we'll, we're going to conservation on the fifth of October. And so we're working towards having a full construction documents and bid documents out on, you know, out to bid so that we'll actually get them back. So by the time we have our special fall town meeting, we're able to bring a solid number. And so obviously we will still have to work through this easement issue, which we are continuous thing, working with the landowner sort of separately from all of the permitting process through the town boards and committees.
And real quick, does, does, what, what did they specify what they're going to use that easement for? Is it going to be like regular traffic or? Just some kind of-
Yeah, it's really for just access. And so the way they put it is access agreement for the back portion of the parcel that the landowner still maintains. And so, you know, it's sort of loops around a bit. And so the landowner does have an application from the conservation commission, but has no real project that has been currently filed. And so it's one of the things, we have a couple of options for the easement that we're working with them on. But I don't think sort of general traffic, I, I'm not sure that that's, that's what it would be used for.
And so I think, you know, I, I think the, the inquiry that Peter, thank you Jen, that's, that's helpful. And so I, I think the inquiry that Peter put through town council was, you know, really, and he's going to read into record, but was, you know, is this something that we need to deal with as part of our review of this topic before the planning board? And so I think, I think the town council's guidance kind of makes it pretty clear. And so I think, I think the town council's guidance kind of makes it pretty clear. You know, that it, it's not necessarily in our purview or part of what we need to discuss, but I mean, I'll let her words and, and, and the communication speak for itself.
So thank, am I on here? No, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, you're, you're not on the.
No, so I'm just going to read this into the public record. It says, so I emailed Lisa on, uh, on, on Tuesday, September twenty second. And I have the email in front of me, reading from the email, I said, Lisa, the planning board would like to ask you. To advise and explain if the board is required to review the easement as part of the site plan approval special permit process. I write through my experience of development and location of an easement is not, uh, in the purview of the planning board. Uh, please let me know, uh, if I can send along any documentation. Thank you, Peter. Uh, then. Lisa Mead, uh, writes back on Tuesday, September twenty second at two thirty-one P M. Peter, please note the easement is not currently located on site and further, the town nor the property owner. Has a specified propos- uh, proposed use for the easement. The planning board should review the application as proposed. They can include a condition that in the event. I'm sorry, in the event, in the future, the easement is located and a proposed use is determined. That the applicant should review, uh, I'm sorry, not review, but should return to the planning board. For any modifications, if any, that might be required. Next paragraph, the planning board nor the applicant can cast at any potential impact. All unknowns, all unknowns at this time. In the condition that many, uh, never occur, for the condition as noted above would protect the interest of the planning board. Who assure the site work as proposed. Let me know if you have any questions or if Preston needs any clarification. Uh, I did also correct Lisa that, uh, Preston is off the board and Dale is our new chairman. And so with that, uh, Lisa pretty much spells out that we can do put a condition in the decision. However, it's not part of the review and or application at this time.
I think that would be good.
Peter, thanks, thanks for that, Peter, sorry.
Yeah, no problem. I'm sorry, so to go back, you know, what we're going through is. Is, i- is really this site, you know, a site alteration, special permit? And the site plan review process. Yeah, as advertised, the special permit in the site alteration does take into account the community needs served by the proposal. Obviously, the proposal is a public safety building. Number two would be traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading. Obviously, a very detailed, uh, parking plan and traffic flow has been presented to the board. Utilities and other public services, uh, this is a public service that would be added to the town at this point. And the neighborhood character and social structure. The high school is up the street. I think that kind of comes into effect a little bit as the planning board members look into. The, the neighborhood character, uh, of this roadway is one thirty-five. Uh, the impact on the natural environment, I think that stands for itself.
Can't hear you, Pete.
Peter, you're cutting out.
You faded out.
Just, I'm just reading through. But the, the last three criteria of the sixth would be the neighborhood character and social structure. Uh, number five would be the impact on the natural environment. I believe that stands for itself. And number six is the potential fiscal impact, including, um, impact on town services, typeface and employment. I would, you know, the police department and the fire department are not going to be paying taxes, uh, to the town, so I think we just have to kind of look at that in a different light. Where this is a public project, we are providing public services, I would say, for the residents.
So whenever, whenever you turn your head to the left, your, your mic goes out. Mute, muffles, so you got to talk straight into the, to the camera. We heard most of that.
Okay, does any planning board members have any questions or concerns or would like me to go through the, the, uh, the criteria for this special permit?
Well, again, I just want to clarify that you went through the conditions of the special permit, but are we looking at these only in terms of grading? I thought that's what you were saying earlier, that we were only looking at. These criteria in terms of, does the grading affect this? Does the grading affect that? Or are we commenting about these in general as we would another project?
Go ahead, Pete.
Uh, so regarding site plan review, we would, we would obviously look at. The process that would be very similar to what we, we have always done in the past.
Right.
And I am. I'm just going to grab the grading stuff right now.
Fading out again. So in the site alteration, excuse me, in the site alteration special permit, uh, the intention of purpose. The intent of this section. And preserve it, protect the natural environment by recognizing the vital importance of free and vegetation equality.
Peter, it's really hard to hear you.
I think my internet may be going in and out.
No, when you face the camera, we can hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So this is a site alteration special permit. It's, it's specifically about site alteration.
Correct.
Okay. Um, so I just have one more question then. Um, and that was just another question raised by the design review committee, which was about, um. Signage, I think it's probably a small question at this time, because obviously in a building like this. No one's going to let signage get in the way of visibility. But I just assume that's on the checklist of things that will happen as. As time goes on.
Yes, we'll be designing the site sign in detail presented to the building committee and then taking the advice of the, uh, design review committee. Who suggested making sure we, it didn't, it, it impact on the pedestrian and driving, you know, pathways so that everybody could see. And so we'll probably look to shift it into a, a location that will work best, so that is in progress, it's just, you know, in progress.
Yeah.
But we will definitely, uh, definitely deal with that.
As, as far as the, um, as far as the, looking at the grading and the site, personally, I think it's a very. Efficient and clever way of trying to deal with such a, um. Challenging site condition and, uh, trying to make all of that work. On, um, on a tricky site like that, I, I think it works fair, fairly well. Like I said, I drive by there every day. And, um, I'm always trying to picture what might be there and what's hidden behind those trees, because it's not, the slope isn't totally visible as, as you drive by right now. So, um, so that all, to me, that all works as a, as a, as a way of using this, um. This tricky site, putting it on these various levels and allowing people to exit off the back. I think that makes it a lot more interesting.
And, and the, as far as the wetlands offset. We don't have to deal with that, right? Is that part of this or is that?
No, that's, that's under the purview of.
Okay, that's my thought, just want to show. Any other questions from anybody? All right, and I'm going to go ahead and let anyone from the publics ask questions. Is that okay, Pete? You ready?
Yes.
Okay, is there anyone in the public? From the public who wants to comment? Since this is a public hearing, right? Nobody, okay. Okay, Mark?
All my comments on this came last time about traffic and of everything. I'm just kind of, this is, yeah, a real quick, quicky one. Is, um. Well, from, um. This meeting on, this meeting right here. To the building committee and through the chairman, if I can ask them. What are your next steps to go from here on? That's it.
Okay, I think Pete can answer that one, right?
I, I can take it, I can take a stab at it. Uh, so. Uh, but Jen, I, then I'll probably hand it off to Jen. Mark, this, this obviously, this, this public hearing is for the site plan approval and the special permit concerning the grading. Uh, on the property. And then at this point, I believe, uh, the public safety building committee, uh, which is. Will be meeting again in the committee themselves will be, uh, moving the project. Uh, in, in the documents along to create a more detailed. Plan for the construction drawings, which we are looking to go out to bid, uh, in the near future. Furthermore, on a pedal track, the, the town, uh, and the, I would say the public safety committee. Will be meeting with the conservation commission, uh, regarding their purview of, of the work that's going to be done within. Uh, under a hundred feet of the wetlands, I would say.
Yeah, so we are, um, we're scheduled to go in front of the conservation commission on October fifth. Um, in that same first week of October, Mark, we're hoping to have another, um, public forum to sort of. Make sure that folks know that this, this will start to, um, this is going to come to people, uh, for the special town meeting. We're, um, in the months of October and November, uh, leading into a special town meeting, we're hoping to have at least two to three more public forums. Um, and, and then in parallel, you know, we'll, we'll be working with H A T and the team to have construction documents that will go out to bid. Um, this is a pretty, pretty long, extensive process in terms of bid documents. We have a. O P M that helps us through that process to make sure that we're, um, have all the proper documentation. We get the bids and then we'll, then we'll present the whole package at town meeting, um, and because it would be, uh, required for debt exclusion. We'd also have, it would also be a ballot question. And so those dates are to be determined in terms of, obviously, a special town meeting hasn't been called just yet or an election, but those are sort of the points that we have to make it through.
So that tells me that this December meeting, town meeting is not going to get it.
Well, we're shooting for our next, uh, yes, for the next town meeting, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So. Okay. So are, are we trying to? Vote on this tonight? Are we discussing this and trying to call a vote on this tonight for the grading? And special permit for the grading, or are we discussing it and? Pete?
No, so we, I, I believe unless the planning board has any other questions concerning the site plan and or the grading. I, I think it makes sense to, you know, you know, call a vote, uh, and to move things forward. I think the elements, you know, if we are going to talk about, you know, coming to a, to a decision. Would be, you know, adding conditions, uh, concerning what Lisa Mead has said compared to the easement. I believe, you know, it'd be appropriate to put in a condition that, um, as we typically do. Uh, with the last couple, uh, projects would, that would be once, uh. You know, once the construction in the building, you know, the building, the drawings have been completed and it's ready to move forward. To a building permit stage, that they submit those to the planning board for review, uh, just to make sure that. What we approve i- is actually going to be built concerning, uh, the look and feel of the building. But I think, you know, for the most part, it does make sense, you know, if, if everybody agrees to move forward and call a vote tonight.
Okay, so that's, that's all this together, so if we approve the special permit for the grading. And then we put conditions in there, we still have input on the rest of the. Landscaping and the lighting and all that.
Well, the site plan is, is another, yeah.
That's another issue, it's not all one.
Well, it's, it, it's one package, and so, you know, if, if we're, you know, we're, we're going to talk about the, the grading and the special permit for that. Then, you know, the site plan, the process, I think it, it kind of moves on pal, or parallel tracks on this one deal.
So I'm just saying, we, I, I don't, I don't want to, if we approve this, then that's the whole, we're done. And except for conditions.
Correct.
Then we should, uh, see if anybody has any questions on any of the other issues, because if it's all part of the same thing. And we need to put conditions in there, we need to talk about all those things. The other things that we're going to actually be voting on or putting conditions on, correct?
Uh, that would be correct.
Okay. So the planning board, does anyone have any questions or if you, if you followed that whole conversation? On any of the other, on the site plan review? That we're doing?
I, I think it would be, I think it'd be useful to put the, to put the condition in, uh, as laid out by Lisa Mead and her guidance to us. And with regard to the. Planning board. At, in, in the language that she laid out in terms of a. Condition.
And, and also I agree, um, with Pete that we should put in. A condition of, to get the fi- once the final plans are done, to have a review of that. Um, the only thing I don't know about is if we approve this and then we don't like something that's in that plan. What happens? But since we don't really have a complete final plan, I don't think. Quite yet.
Um, and so Dale, I, I just want to let Jen. Jump in for a second, and so there's one, one thing that it, you know, as this building is going to move forward, you know, i- if. If somebody from the planning board would like to step forth and, and take part in, in work with the committee. But I'm going to let Jen explain a little bit more.
Yeah, so I think this will speak a little bit too, to some of Tricia's concerns about, um, the design review comments, so. Emma and Peter and I spoke, uh, directly after our design review meeting and we sort of. Um, thought about, we have a materials and color meeting, so you know, this, this process is obviously unique in terms of, you have a building committee that's gone through, you know. Twenty-something meetings or thirty meetings, um, working with the architects and giving input on design, taking votes on aesthetic and all of these things. A- and so then we come here, and so what we, you know, was very clear is that they, uh, design review had some opinions, um, particularly around sort of color. Um, when we were really having some of the conversation, and so, um, we are planning, we have our materials and color meeting. We're going to extend an invitation to Bill Savage as the chair, um, a- and so that we can have that, um, we can have opinions. So with the committee and sort of talk it through, um, that way we're all sort of on the same page, so again, we, they satisfied the requirements. But also we want to make sure that they, they did have a voice in the process, and so certainly. We'd love to have somebody from the planning board as well come to that meeting, um, or any of our meetings, um. But that meeting in particular, because that's really where the sort of final touches of the, the aesthetic or the color is going to, to come in, so. Uh, you know, certainly we can keep you posted on when that meeting will be avail, will be happening. We're trying to figure out sort of logistics, because I think we have to figure out a way to safely do it in person, so that we can really see. The, the color doesn't, isn't, it's awfully hard to do it on the screen. And some of, you know, so, you know, we're trying to figure that out, so, uh, that's sort of where we are in that process.
Okay, so as this is.
So what does that mean? Uh, uh, okay, so I hear you, Jen, so what does that mean from a process go forward for us? Like, what, what does that boil down to? I, I hear what you're saying, but.
So I think that if, if you guys felt that you could approve the site plan with a condition. That we come back, um, uh, come back with a final sort of, the final product, at least I think it would provide some interim input. In terms of, and obviously the design review, I'm hoping will also participate and it will work out with scheduling, but I think what it does is just a little bit more input in the process. As we're, as we're moving forward, so we would still come back if, if that's what the planning board really wants in terms of. You know, so that everybody can see it and we can talk about it, but at least there is some, uh, input from the planning board perspective. As well as design review as in, in conjunction with the building committee.
Okay, because I, I, you know, I understand the building, the, all the other committees have put in a lot of work on this. And so, you know, I trust what they're doing there, but i- i- any other board members have any concerns about that? Because normally we, it comes to us for the site plan review and we. Because normally we, it comes to us for the site plan review and we go over the lighting and the parking and the landscaping and the, all that stuff. But it seems like you guys have already done that. And so unless somebody has an issue with it, I'm okay with what you guys have done. But any other board members have an issue?
Um, I, I don't, I don't have an issue at all. I, as, as you said, I trust the, um, the building committee that has been working on this for, for a long time. You know, that said, I appreciate, um, Jen's offer to, um, to m- make sure people are included and feel included in that kind of almost wrap up discussion of what the building is doing. And so, um, I, I don't want to impede their process in any way going forward, but if they're happy to come back and kind of share, um, wh- what happened at that meeting, if, if that's, you know, that, that would, it'd be, it'd be nice to hear, but I don't want to slow down the process in any way. Just too important for the town.
Yeah, because this is a little bit different than the normal projects that just come to us, I think. This go, this has gone through a whole bunch of other process already with other, other groups and committees. So it's a little bit different than normally we would do all that work.
Yeah.
But I like, I like what they've done.
Yeah, I think it's about making sure, since it is a, a community project, um, in, in the biggest sense of, of the word, to make sure that the community in general, um, feels included. Um, if they haven't had an opportunity so far, so.
That's a, I think that's a good reason to have it, have them come back. The condition that they come back with the final plan and the colors and then all those things. And we have another, one more chance for everybody to put their input in before, you know. That won't affect, you know, the building of the project, right? That's maybe.
No, Dale, I think, you know, you know, as. I hope not. Dale, the colors will not affect the building and the project, obviously. Uh, there's a couple more hurdles that are in front of the, the, the building committee, uh, which would include going to town meeting. Um, and so I, I, I think this, you know, having, coming back in, in front of the planning board to talk about the colors and the materials would be a, uh, a, a, would be, would be very, uh, would, would be ca- I think the building committee would be very happy and capable of doing that or, and meeting that traditional condition that we've been putting in our conditions.
And then maybe if the public wants to put their input into.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and please note, to my knowledge, and Jen, please correct me, but the, the public safety building meetings are public meetings as well. So anybody, uh, can, can show up at those i- i- as a member of the public.
Yeah, and we have had people come, um, you know, we had a, a, a lot of people come while we were talking about sustainability and possible sort of the green energy alternative. So, um, you know, definitely we, you know, they were open to the public and we allowed public comment. It was obviously not a hearing, um, but, but if, if members of the public came and had, uh, comments that they want to make, we certainly took those.
So it's just a something, it's just a something that we're going to put a condition in that, um, the, um, the building committee will, um, invite, you know, reach out to various other groups to be a part of this discussion about colors. Is that just a condition or is that actually having to come back?
I, I don't know. Can we make that a condition or is that just something that we suggest they do?
I think we can suggest that they do that. I think it's good public policy. Um, I think we can put a condition in, uh, that when the building plans are completed and they are looking to apply for building permits, we can go back, we can review the, the, those plans to make sure that they reflect the rendering that we have approved at that time.
That way we have fading in and out online.
Oh, I'm sorry. I need a new microphone. I've had too many Zoom meetings with this microphone, you know. Uh, Dale, I'm, I was going to say that.
Yeah, if we, what you're, what you're, you were saying is that we have, we put a condition in so that they come back to us so that we can have one last look at everything. The final look. And everybody can see what, what's going on and put their last comments in.
I just wanted to say one quick thing, that this is a public process, so, a public bid process. So, um, we cannot control the, the actual, um, uh, product that, uh, contractor submits, unlike a developer might be able to. Um, we have to provide the, uh, in the bid documents, three choices of companies and minimally. And they get to choose who, who they do. So it doesn't mean that we won't get, um, you know, a gray if we want gray or a blue or pink if we want pink. It just means we might not get the pink that we show you that day because we don't have any control of that. And that, and that's just the, that's just Massachusetts public bid laws and we don't have any control over that. So I just want to let you know, that's a little different than a developer, you know, it says, I'm going to use this pink granite. Um, and this is the great, this is what it's going to look like. We don't have that control. So just caution, you must know that from public project, but just wanted to bring that up.
So it may not turn out exactly the way we like it anyway at the end.
Yeah, I mean, it, I, I haven't had a pro- I've been doing this for forty years. I haven't had a project that looks, oh, you know, uh, very different. But say, um, you know, say you expected it to be this exact shade of gray that we want, um, that we pick. And the company that doesn't have that exact shade, but they have something very similar. So it could be like that. So what we do is we pick a basis of design and we, um, tell them what we want. Um, and, but they, we do, we, uh, can't force them to pick that company. Um, so it's just the way it works. Um, we could get, um, ten nacins that could bid on this project and some of them will go right to what we did and just because it makes it so much easier. And others will say, no, I'm going to deal with company Y and that's the company we have to find a product for, so. They can't change it from black to green. Let's put it that way, but.
But in the same color, it can be a different product, so it may not be exactly the same.
Exactly, cor- correct.
From one company to the next.
Correct.
But we can, but we can still come back and say, you know, we don't want the green, we want the tan or we want the gray.
Oh, you mean in the committee, you know? Yeah, I mean, once the, once the building committee, um, decides what they want it to look like, that's what the basis of design will be. I don't think we'll be coming back in six months and say, now we want it to be green. Although, unless it's exactly the same price point, and then it becomes a whole issue of, um, of, you know, substitutions during construction, which you could never, uh, do without costing a lot of money, things like that. So, um, I think it'll be, I think it, I think the, uh, color meeting will be helpful for every, you know, for people to see and hone in on uh, final image of it and, um, and, and then, you know, it'll be a matter of us showing you what the committee would like to present to the town, so.
Okay, so I think what, what we would do is we, we should, if we take a vote, we put in the conditions that town council recommended and, and for the easement of having the option of reviewing that if it comes up. And then having a fi- one final review of the final plans once it's, once they're done with them. Would that be, am I getting close?
No, I think that's perfect. And, and, and one note I will add is, is working with everybody on this project, I will reach out to all planning board members and let everyone know when this color meeting is going to be with the design review committee, I'm sorry, with the public safety committee. Um, a- and so if every, if people on the planning board, if playbook members are willing or able to attend, they can, and that, that meeting.
Yeah, can we all, can three of us attend it? We just can't talk, right?
Yeah, you can just post.
We'll post, yeah.
Okay, I think that's a good idea too.
And, and we could be, and then the planning board can be part of it. And, and if that's, that, that's the easiest thing to do.
And that is, that, that doesn't have to be in our decision, right? We're just going to.
No, I think, you know, if, if the planning board is there and, and three members would like to go to the meeting, I can, we can post a public meeting that the planning board will be there and, and then that will give you legal authority to, uh, to discuss, I would say, uh, internally as well.
Okay, so if no other planning boards have any other objections, I think someone wants to do a vote, I think we have to close the public hearing first, or?
That would be correct.
I move to close the public hearing.
Seconded.
All in favor, roll call.
Tricia Kendall, aye.
Lakshmi Krishnan, aye.
Deepa Menkada, aye.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
Dale Buchanan, aye, that passes five zero zero. The public hearing is closed and entertain a motion to approve the special permit with the conditions that we talked about and, and Pete will word that all out from what she said, correct? We'll be able to look at that before we sign it.
Yeah, once I draft it, uh, I'm going to, I'll, I'm going to send it to the planning board members along with Lisa, just to make sure, uh, you know, as, as I do with large projects, send all decisions to Lisa for proof.
All right.
Okay.
I will move that we approve the special p- permit with the conditions as described.
Seconded.
All in favor, roll call, please.
Tricia Kendall, aye.
Lakshmi Krishnan, aye.
Deepa Menkada, aye.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
Dale Buchanan, aye, that passes five zero zero. Okay, and then Pete will get those all, well, Emma will probably do it all, but right.
We just need one more vote for the site plan.
I will move to approve the site plan as presented. There were no conditions on that one. Everything was attached to the other one, right?
Correct. Good, any second?
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor, roll call, please.
Tricia Kendall, aye.
Lakshmi Krishnan, aye.
Deepa Menkada, aye.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
Dale Buchanan, aye, and passes five zero zero. All right, thank you, everybody, for all the hard work that everybody's putting into this. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
We'll get, we'll get you all copies of those conditions so you know what you have to do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It's team.
Okay, thank you.
Do you, Pete's got the agenda there. I, I can't find it.
Either.
I think it blew out the window somewhere in Oklahoma.
We're at three hundred Elliott Street.
Yeah. Um, thank you, Emma. Uh, actually, Emma brings a good point, uh, just before we move on. Do all members want to come in and sign the permits or do you want to vote that one person sign? For the decisions on the last one?
Either way. Does anybody have, when is it going to be signed? It's not going to be for another week, right? So I'll be back.
Another week or two, I would say.
We can all come in and sign them.
Yeah, okay.
Is that okay with everybody? Everybody can make time to come in and sign it at some point.
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
And look at more shingles, colors deciding. We're going to have a new s- we're going to have a new shingle palette.
You're going to have a new nickname, the planning, the, uh, the. All right, so moving on, uh, the planning board is, uh, now, uh, ready to open the public hearing for three hundred Washington Street, I'm sorry, three hundred Elliott Street, which is the Bank of America. And I am going to read the public hearing notice, um, into the record. Uh, if everyone can hold, bear with me for a few minutes. And if you can read it facing straight on to the camera, I think it'll get better audio.
Yeah.
My cursor is spinning, waiting to open this.
You know, Pete, there's a lot more options than AOL dial-up for your home internet. They have, I think they call it high speed.
Do you want me to share my screen with it?
I shouldn't.
Yeah, can you do it, Emma? I think my internet is, I always can, you know what, Emma? Can you do, can you read the public hearing notice?
Sure.
You got it.
Do you want to read it or should I?
Can you, uh, I'm going to reconnect to the, I'm going to disconnect and reconnect for everybody.
Okay, the Ashland Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, September twenty fourth, twenty twenty at seven fifteen P M via Zoom video conference at the following link to hear the petition of Bank of America care of Bill Sharkey, C B R E requesting design plan review and site plan review per chapter forty A, section six of the Massachusetts zoning act and chapter two eighty-two, section nine point six, design plan review and nine point four, site plan review of the actual bylaws. The applicant is proposing additional exterior site lighting to be operational during all hours of darkness. Property in question is located at three hundred Elliott Street, assessors map twenty-six, lot fifteen, in the Highway Commerce Zoning District and Pond Street Mixed Use Overlay District. Parties wishing to be heard on this matter should submit comments to the planning board ahead of time and/or appear at the time and place indicated above. Materials may be viewed at town hall by appointment or at the U R L on the town website. For more information or just hit comments, please contact Peter MacJack.
So.
Okay, is Pete back yet?
Yes.
Yeah, can we let Bill, is Bill going to give us an, kind of an overview of what's?
I, yes, I'm going to ask Bill to step forward and give us an overview. And, uh, Emma, can we please make Bill a co-host so he can share his screen?
Awesome.
Bill, the stage is yours.
Okay, thanks, folks. Um, is the volume okay? Everybody all right?
Yes.
Um, my name is Bill Sharkey. I'm with C B R E. We're the property managers for the bank in New England, uh, Bank of America in New England. And, um, I work on a certain, uh, group of projects called exterior lighting projects. These are really targeted at, um, A T M use. Um, and where this stems from is the, the state has a, a law, general chapter one sixty-seven B, section three. I'll just read the first sentence. A financial institution or organization shall adopt and maintain safeguards to ensure the safety of a customer using the electronic branch. So, a couple of things come into play with this, you know, with A T Ms. Um, they have to be on since they're open twenty-four hours a day, the lighting has to be on. Really, they would just call it, you know, dusted on, uh, all hours of darkness. Um, and in to take it another step, there are several states that actually have certain photometric numbers that you have to reach, the foot candles on the ground, um, to reach, uh, state law. New York, California, Florida, um, Texas has it, Massachusetts does not. But the bank has adopted New York, uh, the New York law as their standard to use. And I do about twenty-four of these, um, annually, uh, at various places. It's, you know, part of the bank's pro- uh, program that they adopted for safety and security. Um, what's here is to like that, that standard. I think a lot of, uh, places sort of refer to the New York law as sort of an industry standard at this point. Um, I, you know, part of this is, uh, you know, they try and get a certain amount of foot candles on the ground, fifty, oh, your fifty-foot radius around an A T M. Um, portions of the work we do also try and cut down on, you know, shadowy areas where somebody could hide and, you know, jump out at someone using an A T M at two A M, something of that nature. Um, a lot of times we try to have to cut back landscaping and, you know, try and, uh, clear an area out so that, you know, people can. you know, people can be safe for the using it, you know, again, midnight, or in the morning, wh- whatever time. So this program upgrades everything to LED type lighting i- as part of the program and um, you know, strives to meet that, that's industry standard.
Okay, and one quick question. Are the bank, the bank is, the bank doesn't own the property, right, or do they?
Correct, no. It's, it's a lease pro, the bank leases the property.
Okay, so if you put this in, and at some point the bank goes out, they take it with them?
No. We leave it for the unless the landlord specifically requests it be removed.
Okay.
So, Bill, you, um, you had presented, you provided to the board the, um, schematics of what you're proposing. Could you present that and take us through that, please?
Um. If I can, I'm not sure exactly how to put this up.
One of us can, one of us can display it, and then can you talk through it?
Yeah, I could kinda give you the brief, um, overview of this. This would be, um, how's this?
We'll, 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 we'll put it up.
Bill, we're gonna share, we're gonna share our screen.
We'll, we'll share it.
Can I, can everyone see? I just shared it, can everyone view that?
Yes, you can see it.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, Bill, just let me know when you wanna go to the next page.
Uh, sure, next page, please, I think we probably wanna go to let's go to page four. Um, what these folks do is, uh, color code everything for us. Generally, the blue would be new light fixtures. Um, green is existing fixtures to be removed.
So just orient, just orient ourselves, sorry, Bill, just to orient everybody to this. The top of the drawing is Route one thirty-five. The L is the, the, the plaza in question, and the Bank of America is in the
Right in the corner.
Right there where your finger, the, the pointer is, yep.
We can see there's a little arrow towards ATM two.
You're talking about Route one twenty-six, right?
Thank you, thank you, yep.
Sorry. And you also have an ATM in the inside vestibule. So, if you go to page eight, or actually take a step back to page four. This is a photo metrics of the next page. Four.
You want the page where it shows the light, right?
Yeah, the photo metrics.
Yeah.
Yeah, one more. There we go. This is sort of a photometric view of, um.
Can you zoom in, Emma?
And then if we go to page eight, it's what the bank is trying to achieve.
My apologies, it looks like my plan stops at seven. Let me see. Let me see if I have a more updated plan, one second.
Bill, just a question out of curiosity. Uh, how long has this bank, uh, existed, uh, at this location?
Boy, uh, Peter, you've asked me a good question. I'm not sure how long it's actually been there. That was when the leases up, um, I'd have to go dig that out of the files somewhere.
Okay. Just out of curiosity.
Yep.
So this is the photometric bill?
No, it's been at least ten years.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of these, you know, what the bank bought, and they bought a lot of these leases originally, Bay Banks, Fleet Banks, Bank of Boston's. It's probably been a, a bank for quite a while. And this is the footprint that they're trying to accomplish. Um, within this, there's two new light poles that are proposed. They say several fixtures, um, would be replaced, which would be the greens, and the blues would be new.
So this is the, one new light pole over here by where the dumpsters are, right?
Correct, is that?
Yep.
And real quick, that light pole, evidently that is shining towards the building because it looks like it's not covering underneath it, the parking, right? It's, it's aimed at the building?
Correct. What, one other quick comment, all the, um, fixtures that are used on the poles and on the building are all full cutoff style? That they all shine down.
So then, so then the one that he just put the X on, isn't that just gonna light up the dumpster? Or the parking?
It'll light up.
And that's not in the new little lighting plan? You see what I mean? You got the, the little, little area with the half-round.
This, this area.
That's the new lighting plan.
The, the first
That area.
The first plan that we looked at would be the overall site plan with the photometrics. That would be the entire parking lot.
Okay.
This one is just the page of, these are the numbers that the bank is trying to get to in a fifty-foot radius.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
Continue. Joe?
So, there's another light pole out front facing at the building.
Does that, this one here, Bill?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a new one. This is a new one, right?
Yeah.
Yep, okay. And then you've got a new light here and a new light here, which would be on the side of the building.
Correct.
And you've got some, some other new fixture here.
In the front, yep.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I can say from, you know, I could personally, like, this is actually a, a, a bank that I have used and I have used at night. And, um, this, this side, you know, access point is definitely fairly dark, there is quite a bit of darkness all along the per- the perimeter here, there is no light there. There are dumpsters over here, so, um, at, just at a base level, I understand what the, I, I get a sense of what the bank's trying to accomplish um, via their proposed changes here.
And do you, do you have any of these drawings that show how close the neighbor, any of the neighbors are around there? Or there, are there any butters that are right up against the back or that possibly be affected?
I don't, we didn't have that on any of our plans.
There's definitely a home right here um, down that slope.
Yeah, I think if you look at the, the front page, the picture that's on the front, it'll show the home. There you go.
Yeah. And
and how far below the parking lot grade is that? Is it very far down? I know it's a pretty, it's up on a is, is that house like down thirty feet lower than the parking lot, or is that? Do you know?
I don't.
I'm only saying because when, it's one thing to have the lights shine all straight down, but when you're below it looking up, you still see the light. I don't know how much of, how those, that affects. You know what I mean? What I'm saying is if you look at a light bulb from underneath.
It is down I do believe.
It, it definitely is, I, I mean, I have the Google Street, I have the Google Street View, I can pull up for a second just to put it to context. I can share, Emma, if you want, for a second. So, let me just take one click back. Can you guys see?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so the bank is uh, right up here at the top of this right behind that tree line. So. Yeah.
The new pole would be somewhere kinda behind that bent power pole there.
Somewhere up in here.
Up the hill.
And there doesn't seem to be that much tree coverage to uh, cut, hide in the light, yeah, especially the fall leaves.
I mean, I, I do think we had a, one of the property owners that wanted to, was, is present, I think. I'll stop sharing, sorry, Emma.
Hi, yes, I'm here, that's my home. Um, and my bedroom is, if you look at the first her first page of that, you can see where the ATM lines up to the house, and our bedrooms are on that side of the property, well, some of the bedrooms are on that side of the property, so the son's bedroom, which slopes down, is on the bottom, then my, our bedroom, which is on the top. Um, I can understand wanting the safety feature, uh, you know, obviously upgrading the lighting for safety, however, um, I would like to enjoy my, the, just the nuisance of lighting as it is right now. Um, I can imagine it going out to the, to the, to the tree line, or even out to the dumpsters. What that would feel like living here. So I'd like to enjoy my property, if we can, I don't know, I don't know at that point what, what that means. Um, but I know it's dark, it is dark up there. I just, I don't know what that's gonna feel like come winter, when, what, in a couple weeks, once these we, leaves fall. We've been here for ten plus years, as it is now, we've been dealing with a lot of issues with that property. With just, just a lot, garbage coming down the hill, lighting, people coming through the, from the property down, just to add one more thing, oof, it, it I don't know.
So did you?
But, that is that side of the house, if you flip to page one on that, you can actually see where the, where the yellow house, where that lines up to the ATM.
So will that be, um, those things they, they, cause they don't put out if I understand correctly, they put out light, but the, not like ambient light all around, it just directs it straight down? I'm just asking, Mr. Sharkey.
Yeah, um, I, you know, I'm wondering if, uh, sort of a graphic rendering of what the lighting would actually look like might help to envision it?
What is, what is, uh, you said it, you're, you're, you're proposing, um, bringing it up to standards of what New York is, and that, and, 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 and stuff, fifty feet, that's what Bank of America wants to do. Well, what is it right now within that property?
Um, i- it's pretty low. It's almost somewhat negligible, um.
What's that, what's that?
I mean, if I, I, I'm just really kinda go by the numbers of what, you know, I think what's there. Really sort of zero point one, which just says very little lighting.
So we're going up to fifty from zero point?
No, it's, it's, as we go kind of down the hill, it would be look at three point six, three point eight, one point nine, zero point seven, zero point three, zero point two, zero point one. As it goes down the slope. So
That means, that means there wouldn't be any
The light is showing seven point two. At the dumpster is showing one point nine.
So that means there wouldn't be any direct light coming from those fixtures into the house, but from the house, you would still be able to see the light through the trees, I assume.
Yeah, these are not like floodlight type or, uh, that type of thing, it's, you know, more of like a flat I just call it a flat light fixture that uh, as I say, they just call them full cutoff, which they really throw the light down. There's nothing that goes up, so to speak.
Yeah, I don't think up is the problem right now.
No, I understand, I'm just trying to
Yeah, so is there, is there any kind of a fence between that, um, parking lot property and the hill?
I don't think so.
The home is, I mean, it you know, it's a still level, so it then becomes that our, the, the second floor is looking directly at the parking lot, and I have two windows, which is our bedroom, that kinda look, it looks directly at it. You know, so us being, walking up to the property, it looks one way, but being in your bedroom, it looks another way.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just wondering if there was an opaque, if there was an opaque fence between the parking lot you know, right on the edge of the property that then, uh,
Yeah.
you know, you'd be looking up through the trees and seeing the fence, but the light wouldn't come through. If, if light does come through, like, you know, if it, if it
So it can, instead of a pole-mounted fixture, can, would surface-mounted fixture help so that you can lower the height, and so the kind of coverage is literally around that, because it looks like the, from the photometrics also, it's really high compared to what you have currently. Uh, the new fixtures are really high that it's showing, so instead of having it at twenty-two feet poles there would maybe a kind of a surface-mounted fixture at a kind of a much more human scale, so that it really doesn't transmit that far to the next property, maybe would that help? It will still light it, because you're obviously, even with this fixture, you're not kind of balancing what's going on in the site, even at the fifty-feet level, because it looks like there's so much variation even in that fifty-feet radius, so I wonder if that'll solve the situation with helping the neighbors as well.
Uh, I, uh, I'm guessing that the one fixture we're, we're probably talking about is the AJ one on the side of the building? Or is the new light pole AT one also in question too?
I think it's a new pole, right?
I assume if, I assume if the bedroom is basically in line, or if the rooms of the house are basically in line with the ATM, it would be both of those fixtures on the ATM wall, because if the first one didn't hit, the second one's going to and the new one added to the, the new pole one added to the parking lot in that area.
I think both of them would affect, you'd be able to see them, one's right on the corner of the building and the other it's twenty high in the air, up there in the air shining down, it's gonna be
I'm assuming, this is the lower bedroom, I'm assuming it's gonna come, and this is the win, this is one of the windows, it's my son's bedroom, actually. Or it's gonna be this year, sorry. Um, I'm assuming it's gonna come in here, so. But something needs to be done there for safety, I understand that.
This is Peter, can I jump in real quick? Um, I think sometimes like we're all
Um, I think sometimes like we're all discussing the site, what's there, what does exist, what doesn't exist. I think it may make sense to have a site visit. Uh, so everyone can kind of get their bearings on, um. What actually exists regarding, you know, both from a topograph, a topographical kind of point of view. And the other thing is, I think we should all do is maybe drive up to the ATM. Um, and see how headlights do affect the rear of the property. Uh, so we all can get a better view of actually or or get a better idea. Of of how new lighting or how the current conditions are today. Uh, and then we can kind of talk about maybe what, uh, the proposed lighting. Could do the, you know, A, help safety and promote a safer parking area. But also to to, uh, to make sure that the abiding residents are not being negatively affected by light pollution.
Yeah, I I also assume this can't be the first time this has ever come up in all these, um, many, many lighting corrections around the country. And so certainly there has to be a precedence of, we know what to do and when these. When these, um, lights need to go next to residential properties. So it'd be good to have some examples of, hey, here's how we've mitigated in the past, because I agree, there's kind of no reason to go to zero from zero to sixty. That there's a lot of, um. There's a lot of median places we could land that I think, um. Respects both properties and then.
Yeah, we could go back, you know, to the the bank's lighting consultant and, you know, just pose the the issue to them and. You know, frequently they can move up with with an alternative. I mean, looking at this, I'm I'm kind of guessing sort of the area where the dumpsters are. That there's light fixtures that are actually shining. Towards the side of the building. That might cut down anything that would spill out. Down the hill.
Or or e- even if possibly if you had it on that. The property side that the the house abuts shining away from the house onto the parking lot.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Something up there aimed to away from the house.
That makes sense.
Yeah, Bill, the other thing is this ATM on the side of the building is not in a covered shed, right? It doesn't have, it's not covered, it's open.
Yeah, it's more of a drive up.
Make it covered and make the lights like, uh, um, because making make it structural fixture instead of a pole fixture. If the area, if the point is to get lighting in that corner of the building. Is it better to make it a cup? I'm just, it's just, I'm just throwing about that ever thought about.
It's, um.
It provides safety as well as the lighting problem.
Yeah.
It's probably a drive up ATM.
Throw as far as they're looking to get.
However, when the leaves fall, um, you can see up up into the area. And I look at dumpsters as it is when the leaves fall. Now I'm gonna look at. Lighting a big ATM that's even bigger and shining brighter.
Yeah.
So that's a concern of mine.
I was saying, if you can aim them away from that property as much as possible, it might help. I mean, the ones around the front of the building probably aren't an issue, but just the the couple that are over on that corner.
Yeah.
You could you could figure out a way to to direct a light away from their house.
Yeah, that's what I'm just looking at the plan. That's what I'm thinking of.
And other thing, Bill, looks like I I don't know whether the Google Earth is the most recent, uh, um. Uh, picture off the site, but looks like this is a cover on top of the ATM now.
There is. There's like an overhang.
Just the overhang.
Yeah, and there's existing fixtures under the overhang.
Okay.
Sort of shine right down. If you pulled up in your car. You could use the ATM probably fairly safely. You got those lights up top. But if you park somewhere here and then try and walk over to it. That's.
So is there something that we can up upgrade that or? And see, because it's at a lower level. The overhang is at a lower level, right? It might not, um, shine on the house. I'm, that's just a suggestion.
Yeah, I think the problem they have with it, it's it's just not gonna go throw enough light on the ground. To a fifty.
Cover that, yes, cover everything.
Yeah, to cover what they're trying to cover.
And I, you know, this isn't on the thing, but she brought it up. The headlights is that when people pull up, doesn't that shine right down in there? Car headlights?
Bedroom. And to the the side of the house where their rooms are.
Yeah, I mean, the the car headlights gotta be shining right, right down on you, right?
Me, me.
Cars pull up to that, right?
Yeah.
Something to think about too, maybe putting a little fence where the right straight where the cars pull up to. Anything you could do to help the neighbors out.
Well, they put a fence up there to help with the trash coming down, but the dumpsters also, you know, so.
So that blocks the headlights. Okay, so. Is there any other other public comments? So are are you gonna go back, take this back and and try to? Come up with some other options?
Yeah, we'll go back to the designer and we'll we'll. Ask them if they can do anything off the cuff, um. And see if there's something simple. I'm also gonna get together some renderings for this, just because I think they'll give a much better idea of what the. The lighting will actually look like.
Yeah. So and. As far as, uh, so then you want to schedule this for another meeting?
Yeah, so Dale.
As far as Pete, real quick, as far as the site visit. Unless they could put a light up there where it's gonna go and shine it at night. I really don't. I mean, I can see on the things I've been over there, you can see where. Where how the location and how everything works together, but without having actually a light shining. To me is it, um. Not that it's a bad idea, but I don't think it would help much. At this point for me, and and everybody else is free to. Input on that too. If you want to go look at it, ma- maybe individually, we can look at it. If you run by there, I I don't know if anybody else, like Joe said, he's been there. I use it occasionally, that bank. I've been there at night, so, um.
Dale, you're absolutely right. Until we do this test, lighting test at night to make sure what how much light levels are. It's not like just driving by, you're not gonna figure it out.
Yeah, so we need you guys to go out there and rig up a light. On a twenty foot pole. No, okay, it's getting late, okay.
Okay.
So do they want to schedule another?
Uh, so.
Public hearing or is this just comment?
No, this is a public hearing, so we would have to continue it.
Continue it.
Yeah, obviously, i- if the board doesn't feel like it's appropriate to have a, you know, a site visit, you know, I I know myself, I'm gonna go back out there and 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 walk the site a little bit. I'll put just to get a kind of. Maybe, um, after, you know, having the conversation with with you, the butter, I can I can, um. You know, get some more information back to the board and I'm happy to take pictures. Uh, but regarding a follow-up meeting, or I would ask the board to continue this hearing. Until October eighth or October twenty-second. Uh, Bill, October eighth would be in two weeks, uh, or would you like to go a month out?
Um, October eight works for me, Peter.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay.
Uh, what time? We don't have, we have anything on that night yet?
Uh, no, we do not. So we can, we can move this to eight, seven fifteen.
Okay. So is there, uh, I guess a motion to move this to October eighth at seven fifteen, continue this public hearing?
So moved.
Second in.
All in favor, roll call please.
Christian, I. Deepa, I can die.
Joe, Roberto, I.
Dale Buchanan, I passes five zero zero. And thank you, Bill, and we'll see you on the eighth. With all your great, all your great ideas that are gonna solve this problem.
There you go. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. I'll be reaching out to you and we can, uh, converse about updated plans.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you, Peter.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you, you too.
Pete, we can, Pete, don't worry, we'll come up with something where we can have a site visit. I know you like those site visits.
Hey, you know, I just like to, uh.
Everything, every time something comes up, let's have a site visit.
Site visit.
Let me know, Peter, too, i- if you want to meet out there, like I say, I'm just in Franklin, so I can shoot up.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Okay. Dale, I'd just like to see your face, you know, it's got a town hall.
With a mask over it, yeah.
With a mask on, exactly, exactly.
My little Billy the Kid bank robber mask.
Yeah.
Okay.
Who would have thought everyone in Charleston walks around with a mask on their face, you know, and it's acceptable.
Okay, so next up?
Next up, we have, uh, one twenty-eight Main Street. Uh, so Dan, if you can, uh, enter into the meeting, that would be wonderful. Um, I want to thank everybody for stopping by Town Hall to check out the, uh. To check out the samples, uh, and so tonight, obviously, we are talking about as a follow-up from our site visit last Friday. Uh, the metal material that we would like to see on the, uh. Door of the dormers on that third floor, so, um. If you'd like me to recap, Dale came into the office and and he took a look at, uh, all the 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 examples. Uh, the number one pick of Dale's, uh, well, actually, I'll just say Dale. Um, speaking for you, you like the slate and the dove, uh, which would be the 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 colors of the metal. Uh, Joe and Tricia came by, uh, they liked champagne. Um, and then as a follow-up, they liked Sierra tan and then also slate gray. And then Latchby came in, um. And Latchbe like copper. And, uh, and then also the slate, I would say. So Deeper, I'm sorry, you and I did not get to connect. Uh, and take a look at the metal, uh, samples, but. Uh, at this point, I think, you know, I I'll hand it back over to Dan and 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 the planning board members to discuss. Uh, what colors, uh, indoor material was the, uh, was was favored by all.
And then, so I I will defer a little bit to Trish, because she probably has a better eye for this stuff. A little better eye than me. I won't defer to Joe because I'm not sure about his eye.
That's very fair.
Any of those colors that you said, I looked at them all and are okay. Any of the colors that came up. Where I thought the copper was a little too flashy, shiny. But, uh, um, the rest, those other ones we looked at, remember, Pete, when we were there, the champagne, that was the first one you handed me, I think, and it. So. That's where I'm at. I'm at any of those colors that everybody picked, which doesn't really move us anywhere.
The photograph of the image, um, or of the samples there, Pete?
Uh, I do not.
Okay, I I have one, I can.
Do you want to share your screen?
I I just need a minute to kind of get it up here.
Okay.
And we've pretty much came to a conclusion on the shingles, right?
On the roof?
Yeah.
Yep, we had, we we decided on weathered wood.
Mm hmm. Now, is this gonna get, this will get us a little bit closer, but they, we didn't, did we have anything on the door, front door, or is that still up in the air?
No, the front door, we we, the front door has been discussed and and we did.
Decided.
Yeah.
That was part of the gutters down thing, okay.
Correct, but it has.
Share my screen.
That ha- uh, yes, please. That work hasn't been done or completed yet. Since we went to the site on the site.
Um, what are you seeing?
We see the copper, the champagne's not there, seen the copper one, I think.
Nope.
Some of the green.
In the middle, the champagne is one in from the copper.
Yeah, this is the champagne. Copper, champagne, dove gray and slate gray.
Mm hmm.
So I think, um. You know, my first inclination of of just what I liked was the champagne. Um, in this color palette. Um, but when I went back and I looked at the rendering we were given. Uh, two weeks ago, I guess. Um. I do think maybe the. Maybe it's a it's a lighter color than, y- you had talked a lot, uh, Dale, about the contrast and wanting, you know, the contrast with those roofs. Um, and we had nixed the dark bronze or the medium bronze, whatever it was last time, because there really wasn't, um. There really wasn't any contrast. It was really pretty dark. This one is lighter than that. Um. And then this one is lighter still, so I think it all depends on what the. Um, how the light is gonna be reflecting off the roof at the time, if it's a sunny day, if it's a cloudy day.
In the shade, one side's gonna look different than the other side.
Absolutely, absolutely. I think I think we ruled out this one. I I was there at the same time as Joe. We kind of ruled out the copper as being. Um, kind of too too flashy. And I just didn't like this color with the rest of the palette. I think it's too, it's too blue.
Yeah.
But this is these, this is a. A little bit of a warmer gray and and the champagne obviously is, um, is a much lighter gray.
Either one of those is I'm good with.
The slate looks much, like on this picture, slate looks much better. It gives, provides the contrast.
I think it picks up, yeah, picks up the colors of the shingles.
So Latchme, if we took, if we took out the bronze with, was this one of your second choices?
Yeah, that was my second choice. The only reason I was talking, I was telling Pete why I was saying maybe the copper looks flashy now. But with wear and tear, if it does down, maybe it'll be look much better. I know it looks very flashy now.
But I think, but that's paint, it's copper paint, it's not real copper, so.
Yeah, Joe and I were saying if it was real copper, we would definitely go for that. But it's not. So and, um. Is Deepa still on? I I can't see everyone on my thing.
I am, I'm here.
And what what do you think of these kind of?
I was hoping to see a majority vote on the champagne. But sounds like it's the other way around, because I felt like there was a warmth to that.
I think there's three votes for champagne, though.
There's kind of a warmth to that, which kind of worked with that shingle to me. Um, the other two felt like it was way cooler. And after having the chance to walk through the space as well, it felt like it would tie in. At least that's what I was hoping when I was having this color card. And. My first go-to would be champagne.
Okay. And I'm good with that. Does anybody else object?
I'm good.
And champagne it is. Do we have to vote on these things, the shingles and the champagne, or we just give them the okay?
Well, Dan, do you want to add in any input that you may have or may may not at this point?
Um, not at this point.
Okay.
And so there was that, and then the other, only other issues that came up were the, uh, ballards in the back and the trash can. Do we need to do any dumpster? Do we have to take any action on that?
No, I think, you know, I it's a matter of getting out there and and taking a look at that and, um. And I'm not gonna make excuse, I I mean, I, you know, I, that is still on my to-do list, Joe. I know we talked about that with Dale, um, but.
And that's that, that won't affect the building, really. None of that.
No, that's not gonna affect the building. That's just more of the the site, uh, site as as a whole, I would say.
All right, so do we want to officially make a vote on this and make it official or?
I would ask.
I would entertain a, um, mo- oh. Motion to approve the Weatherwood champagne metal roofs.
So moved.
Second in.
All in favor, roll call please?
Trisha Candelai?
Actually, Christian, I. Deepa, I can die.
Joe, Roberto, I.
Dale Buchanan, I passes five zero zero. And was that the last outstanding? Issues on the building?
I believe so.
Because we okay the door, they haven't done it yet, so, you know, we'll see how that turns out, but, okay.
What about the, um?
We just want to mention that when they change a roof color, all, any of the metal work that's going over. We just wanna mention that when they change a roof color, all, any of the metalwork that's going over the roof should blend into the roof. Correct?
Oh, the drain pipe, mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Scuffers, the scuffers and the drain pipes.
Yeah.
Not, not the champagne color.
Trisha, a quick question, this color is taken outside, right, this photograph?
This was taken outside.
Thank you.
And like you said, it's gonna be from one angle, it's gonna look darker, or the other angle, the front's gonna look light when the sun's on and the sides are gonna look dark, so.
Yeah, that's why I was studying the renderings too, because even on there, like, there's some dark parts, there's some light parts, you know.
I just think it need, it's good because it stands out, it's a, it's a nice feature to the building, it makes it look a little better.
It's a nice little texture that the other one doesn't have too, which we think might just make it more special, more like the original rendering.
Yeah.
But.
Okay, so, does that mean we're good on this now, or done with the?
I believe, I believe that this kinda wraps up the, the, um. The, the conversation regarding what it means, so.
That being said, real quick, that being said, we'll be keeping an eye to make sure that it turns out the way we went over all this stuff, right? Because if it come, if something happens and ends up not looking like, like what we just went through, then that could be another issue, correct?
Correct.
Just, that's just for their information, that, you know, I mean, we need to see, this needs to look like what we've approved. So, but, okay, that's it.
Dan, from your pers- Dan, from your perspective, is there any ambiguity left, is there anything that the board has not been very clear about?
No, it's, it's been clear, so.
Cool, thank you, thanks for your time, I, I wish we didn't have to go through this, but.
It's been a good learning experience for me and, uh, for Carlos, so.
Yeah. Think of all this stuff, next time, think of all this up front. Alright, so does that conclude that?
Yes, that concludes one twenty-eight Main Street, so thank you, Dan.
Thanks.
And what is up next?
We just have minutes.
Hey, everybody read the minutes? Are we gonna do that now, moment of silence for the minutes?
I have read them.
Yeah, I read them too.
Didn't get that from Joe, hmm. Let's leave him, let's put Joe on the screen while he's reading. Any other business while we're doing this, does anyone have anything to bring up? I would just like to mention that Pete and I are working on the farm porch initiative. Which, I don't know, we went over this with everybody that's here, but I'm proposing, and some other towns have done it already, and we, we're working on it. I believe Pete's working on it, that, um, to make it, it's a bio-zoning change that. Will allow, because right now you can't build into the frontage of your house, the setback. This will allow you to bro- build an open farm por- porch into the setback, certain, it has percentages and sizes. And you're limited to what you can do, can't close it in, it's, it's a farm porch to make houses more inviting, you know, more community. That you can put on without having to get a variance or a special permit. You can, and it describes exactly this, how far you can do what, and all the numbers, right?
Yeah.
Get that right?
No, I know you did, you know, a lot of towns have kinda done such, you know, media.
Yeah.
Laws and, i- it's in the hope that, you know, create the sense, uh, having a porch kinda create the sense of place. Um, and there's a stronger relationship between the home and the streetscape, and so, uh, a lot of towns have done it. Um, earlier in the meeting, we were talking about form-based codes, uh, which the town did adopt. Uh, a little bit of, of what, how the town adopted, uh, five years ago in the downtown and. In form-based codes speak a lot to how does the, uh, how the buildings interact with the street. Is there a relationship? Uh, what is that kind of sense of place, so, um. But yes, no, I, we are working on that and, and hopefully working that forward as soon as possible.
And, uh, it was a goo- good speech there, but my main motivation was a lot of people I know would like to build porches on the front of their house, and they can't right now. Because they wanna have an outdoor, uh, they have, they're good with the neighbors and they wanna have a little bit more of that. Interactive instead of going on the back deck or in the backyard and be, come out in the front, so that was kinda my motivation.
Yeah, exactly, it's, that's what, that's a hundred percent, it's socialization.
I, I got, I have some comments on the minute, if you guys are done.
Go ahead.
Row, row fifty-six to fifty-seven, Mr. Magic reported the next meeting on September twenty-fourth. Will be a public hearing for the public safety building, or, we just gotta fix it, it's talking about the site visit.
Oh, okay.
You guys all read the minutes and nobody catches that, you gotta be kidding me. And I'm, and Dale's busting my chops saying, I didn't read the minutes.
I was just waiting to make sure you.
Oh, yeah, I did not see that.
That was a test, that was a test, Dale, I know, you put, you had Pete.
You passed, Joe.
Got it.
Awesome. Any other changes? Alright, anybody who wanna make a motion to approve the minutes, from what day were these from? Meeting on?
August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty.
August twenty.
I make a motion to amend, to approve the minutes as amended for August twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty.
Uh, second?
All in favor, roll call please?
Tricia Kendall, I.
Lakshmi Krishna, I. Deepa Rankatay.
Joe Roberto, I.
Dale Buchanan, I, that passes five zero zero. And I noticed that the moving and seconding isn't so quick unless we're sitting in the town hall, everybody's jumping on it now, here it's a. Time delay, everybody's waiting for somebody to say something. Just an observation. And then, is that it, any other business that anyone needs to talk about, or?
No, I think that's it.
And I'm, I'm all set, I, um. I, I'll, uh, I know, uh, just to give Trish a heads up, uh, tonight, I believe the Affordable Ha- the Housing Trust. Did select a member to be part of the Affordable Housing, I mean, the Housing Protection Plan. Which pretty much rounds out the roster of the folks that are gonna sit on that steering committee, so. I'm, uh, I'm hopefully to get that process moving in the next couple of days and or weeks, uh, just to put that on your radar.
Okay, and then one last, one last thing, the pu- uh, the public municipal building, and we're talking about having a, like a joint meeting almost. You will arrange that and let us know the details and.
Yes, once that's, once that's, once that's outlined by Jen, uh, in the, uh, in eight, on HKT. And I will arrange that and I will let everyone know, and if more than, I'm just gonna probably post the meeting once I.
I would.
That, it's there, that way that all five of you can show up, but if only two of you show up, we're still covered if. If someone walks in late, you know, that's not.
Yeah.
An issue, so.
I agree.
Once I do know that date and that meeting, Emma and I will post that meeting, uh, and I will let everyone know.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, does anyone make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, roll call please?
Tricia Kendall, I.
Akshmi Krishna, I. Deepa Rankatay.
Joe Roberto, I.
Dale Buchanan, I, that passes five zero zeros, thank you, everybody, and good night.